Good evening, welcome everyone. Thank you all for being here. It's nice to see such a big crowd. And I know you all showed up for the 7 o'clock budget hearing. So we'll go ahead and get started with introductions. My name is Anupam Chigsood. I'm the vice president, but I'm filling in for President Christensen, who is not here today. So we'll go ahead and introduce our board colleagues, starting with Judy on my left.
Hello, I am Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out tonight. And I am going to apologize to my fellow board members for disrupting the seating arrangements. And I'm going to also apologize to you. I had a knee replacement three weeks ago. I'm hoping that I can stay for the whole meeting, but it will depend on my pain level. So I really am looking forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Picard, and welcome everybody. Nice to see everyone.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
I'm Ina Ahmed, and thank you. This is great. Welcome.
Jennifer Voss, thank you for being here.
Thank you, board colleagues. Dr. Merritt, would you please introduce yourself and your staff?
Good evening and welcome. Superintendent Monica Merritt, I'd like to begin by introducing my administrative assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here, capturing our minutes. Also, Mr. John Krieger, our voice of PCCS, who is here taking care of our technology needs. I'd like the remaining members of staff to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiscus, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Jill Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. I'm Abdul Matt Yun, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good evening. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Thank you. And now I would like to make sure our Student Voice and Action Committee members are here, so please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Josh Patterson, almost a Plymouth senior, just one more day. And SVA co-chair. Glad to see you all here tonight.
Good evening, I'm Arjun Srinathan. Still got three years left. Thank you all for coming tonight.
All right, let's stand for the pledge. And Josh and Arjun, would you please lead us to the pledge?
Our pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So every June, we have to have a public budget hearing, and we're doing that at today's meeting. So I am going to hand it over to our treasurer, Keehoe.
So as this agenda is a little bit different than we normally would have, we have a public hearing that we do, and immediately after that, we'll lead into the regular meeting. At this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jill Minnick, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening. Thank you and welcome. I have with me this evening Jodi Melbourne, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting. She is knee-deep, or maybe neck-deep, into this work, as we know from our monthly financial statements that we presented at our FNO committee meeting. And I'm grateful for her work in this budget amendment and the proposed budget for next year. So with that, it is our pleasure to present this proposed general fund budget for the 2025-2026 school year. By state law, we are required to adopt a budget for next school year by June 30th of each year. And with that, we know that we also have to have, by law, a public budget hearing to capture input and comments from our community. So, welcome. With that, we know that we haven't even finished this school year yet, yet we are adopting a budget for next school year. We don't know our enrollment. We don't know our funding. But what we do know are the outcomes of the Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference. We know the outcomes of the Governors, the House, and the Senate budget proposals. We have trends and likelihoods in our district. So this proposed budget has a lot of variables and assumptions, but those are informed, and we are presenting to you that work. So with that, we'll jump right into it. We always start our finance work with a connection to our dynamic plan. So with that, strategic goal A says Plymouth Canton Community Schools will increase achievement for all students and close achievement gaps. Our strategic objective in Finance and Operations Number 10, ensure district capability to anticipate and respond to strategic changes or opportunities in educational service and delivery systems through sound financial planning. And that is what we're doing with our budget this evening. So we'll start with a little bit of historical look back. We know that our primary source of operating revenue is state aid. State aid is comprised, in an easy mathematical equation, it's the number of students times a foundation allowance of dollars per pupil. So one function of that is the foundation allowance per pupil. We see a historical look back for the last 10 years, and we can see just a nominal increase each year in that dollar value. For next year, we are projecting an increase to a $10,000 per pupil level. This year, it is $9,608. So that is an increase of $392 per pupil, and we'll get more into that as we move through the presentation. We've noted at the top there a blue asterisk with a dollar value of $12,175. And that is the annual cost to educate a pupil per the School Finance Research Collaborative. Their study in 2018 and then in 2021, that is adjusted for inflation from their original numbers. But what that demonstrates is nearly a $34.5 million funding gap for Plymouth Canton alone, if we were to be properly funded to properly educate a student in our district. The other part of that equation, then, is the number of pupils. So when we multiply the number of pupils times that anticipated dollar value of $10,000, that's in general roughly our state aid amount that we anticipate for next year. So with that, this is a look back of 10 years of the number of student full-time equivalents. We do have some part-time students. Maybe they're seniors or what have you, doing other things that make up just a partial schedule. But regardless, we can see the number of student FTEs over the last 10 years were steady for a handful of years, and then after COVID declined significantly. And we also know from this date that more than 70% of school districts in our state are experiencing enrollment decline. So we are one of those districts that we just haven't seen that resurgence of students back to our district, for whatever reasons. But with that, we are anticipating another decline for next year in our enrollment of 151 FTEs for a projected enrollment next year of 15,883 pupils. I'm just going to note that there's a year 2020-2021 there with a green topper to that number. That was during COVID when the state began to see that rapid enrollment decline. And so there was an artificial equation, if you will, to account for the number of pupils so that districts wouldn't see such an abrupt diminishment in their funding. So that year, we did have, according to that super blend formula, they called it, 17,221 pupils. But then you can see the year following, they did not have that little bump for districts, and we went right back into our traditional student counts. So with those just simple historical look backs at our funding, let's move right on into our budget assumptions for our revenue for next year. So as I mentioned, state aid is typically pupils times dollars per pupil. We are projecting a decline in the number of pupils, 583 pupils, for a total enrollment of 15,883 pupils. That's a projected loss, as I mentioned, of 151 FTE, and that equates to about $1.45 million. The foundation allowance, we are going to assume the executive budget proposal's level of foundation allowance. That is the most conservative of the three, House and Senate, not by much. But because we did not receive any increase in that foundation allowance this year, we are taking the most conservative value. Now with that, when we multiply that through with our 15,883 pupils, it is an increase of $6.23 million in revenue. But when we nut that against the enrollment decline, then we have a net state aid projected increase of $4.78 million. Another component to revenue is, for the last handful of years, we have received MIPSR's cost offset payments. And that is an acronym for the Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System. So we are estimating a very conservative $2 million increase there. And then the other significant revenue driver is our enhancement millage, which is a county-wide millage shared among all the districts within the county. And we project that to be about a 2% increase for next year, equivalent to about $125,000. When we look at the expenditure side of the ledger, we have a number of cost drivers. So staffing. Staffing is about 80% to 85% of our budget every year. And that's appropriate. We're a service industry. We teach, and so we should be driven by staffing. So based on board adopted class size guidelines, we will align our staffing to the enrollment, and we are projecting about a $2.25 million savings next year. We also will recognize some savings. We are anticipating some savings for retirements in all different positions. We are estimating about 20 full-time equivalent retirements for about $1.1 million in savings. And those savings are generated by hiring in maybe newer staff or less experienced staff who might come in at a lower salary schedule. Employment contracts, we will always account for those negotiated collective bargaining agreements for next year, as well as the retirement costs. There's an employer rate that is increasing, or rather decreasing, for increased savings of $1.6 million. But there is that unfunded actuarial accounting liability that we know will increase, but that increases on a smaller base. And we do anticipate, as I mentioned on the revenue side, some cost offsets. So our net assumption on the expenditure side is just a flat, no increase. It might go up or down in nominal amounts, but maybe more, but we don't have any more information than that at this time. The hard cap, that refers to the maximum dollar values that public schools can spend on employee healthcare. And that cap is only increasing by 2/10 of a percent. And then custodial, transportation, all of our contracted services, eddestaff or teacher subs and the like, we always include those contractual values. And then utilities, those are always unknown. We did see a little surge in our electric bill this year, so we're bumping that up just a bit next year. But that encompasses our assumptions around natural gas, electric, water, et cetera. So what does all this mean? Well, after accounting for projections of state aid funding, enrollment decline, salaries, benefits, and all those other budgetary impacts, a budget reduction is necessary to maintain a positive fund balance for the next handful of years. So we have identified a budget adjustment of $5.5 million in reductions that's necessary. Now, we know, and every year, we return some level of unspent budgets. So for '25-'26, we're anticipating a little bit less than 1% of those budgets to remain unspent, equivalent to about $2.5 million. So we needed to find some reductions on the expenditure side or generate some revenues. Either way, needed to be about $3 million. So as we went through that work as a district and as a core cabinet team, we were able to identify salaries, benefits, services, supplies, and equipment for reductions across the board, across all departments and schools, for a total of $3.2 million. So we were able to meet that need and then some. So with that in mind, excuse me, we'll notice that about a third of that total value is around salaries and benefits. And then the remainder is around supplies, equipment, services. And some departments have just a percentage or a dollar value that they will make reductions of. Maybe it's not exactly set in stone what those reductions will be, but rather a target value for next year that they have set aside, and those budgets will be rolled back. Most of the salaries and benefits were able to be attributed to vacancies that we won't fill, retirements that we will not replace, our one-time programs, those kinds of things to really minimize impact on our staff. But yet, aligning it with enrollment. So with that, we'll move into some summary-level views of the general fund budget. So we'll start with the revenues. In our revenues, if you were to look in our audit report and all of our past budget presentations, we identify four sources of revenues. Reading the chart, we see '23-'24 actual. Those are the audited values from last school year. The final amended budget is what we will be reviewing later this evening, but those are our projections and our recommendations for the final budget for this school year. And then we will compare that against the proposed budget for next year and show that variance, that increase or that decrease. So just some highlights from this chart. You'll see that on the state source of line item there, we're anticipating about a $7 million increase in those revenues. And that's attributed to that foundation allowance increase and the enrollment decline two or three slides ago for a total of $4.8 million projected increase. And then we also are accounting for that retirement cost offset, but as well as some increased weighted categorical increases. So $2.3 million there for a total of $7.2 million roughly. But we also have another significant value there on the chart. That's that enhancement millage collection that we spoke about earlier. And then summarizing at a very high level those expenditures, we have instructional expenditures, and then we have supporting services. Everything else that goes around to support teaching and learning in the classroom. The chart is set up in the same way. We have our actual audited values from last year, the proposed final amended budget that we'll be reviewing later, and our proposed budget for those expenditures, and then variance. So the takeaways are just some highlights here. We can see that we have about $3.2 million increase in instruction and $2 million increase in supporting services for a grand total increase overall to our expenditures, our anticipated expenditures for next year versus this year, of $5.3 million. And that breaks down across some ways that we use those dollars. So some highlights for you. Salaries, wages, retirement benefit adjustments, nearly $7 million of an increase. That's based on negotiated contracts with those employee groups. But also, it does include reductions to align with enrollment, and it accounts for that share of the $3.2 million in reductions that we just covered, as well as that $2.5 million of unspent budget allocations. So those dollars are spread everywhere along the budget because we know we have planned reductions across every department and school and area. And we also know that those unspent budgets are sprinkled across all of our 19,000 line items in the budget. So likewise, on the services and supplies and equipment and other types of expenditures, we have a $1.6 million decrease. And that accounts for increases in utilities and some of the contracts that we have with service providers, but it's also reflecting a proportionate share of those planned budget reductions and the unspent budget allocations. So it's important to point out, though, that without that $3.2 million reduction and the $2.5 million budget savings, together, that's $5.7 million. And without those reductions, we know that our expenditures, then, would be $5.7 million greater, equivalent to $236 million. And that's important because as we move into this slide to talk about our fund balance highlights, we see, if we zip right over to that far right column, we're anticipating an increase, a positive change in our fund balance of $2.1 million. But without those expenditure reductions, the ending fund balance as a percent of expenditures would have been less. It would be 12.4%. What we're proposing for next year is that we reach that 15% best practice target in our fund balance percentage. We also know that affects compound in future years. So without those $5.7 million in savings and unspent budget, we know the year after next, our fund balance would fall below board policy. It would fall below 10%. So we want to take action now to avoid that. So the '24-'25 final budget amendment does not anticipate, in those numbers, unspent budgets. We didn't take any intentional action to reflect that, although we know year to year, that often happens. We have vacancies we don't fill, supply budgets go unspent or what have you. So we also know that less than projected expenditures this current school year will increase the beginning fund balance for next year. It will positively increase next year's outcomes, right? If we don't spend all of our budgets this year, that normally occurs. But yet, the budget that we'll be presenting a little bit later for our final amended budget is really where we project we will land. We want to have really good data, straight-on budgets, so we can make really good decisions going forward. Okay? So I also want to point out, for succeeding fiscal years, FY '27, '28, '29, those will also require budget reductions to maintain the fund balance levels. And we know from previous conversations we've had at this table, at this board table in May, April, March, going right on back to January with the first Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, we've been talking about this need. And in last year's budget as well. So not that it makes it any more enjoyable, but it's where we are, and we're going to take the necessary steps to position us to have really good fiscal health in coming years to serve all of our students. All right. So with that, then, wow, what's on the screen? Well, this is, this is just an excerpt of a very high-level summary general fund budget. It's just putting all those pieces together. At the top, we've got our revenue. We showed that a few slides ago, and then we have those expenditures. Now, we have something new on this side called Other Financing Sources and Uses. While they're not, they're transfers in and out of general fund. They're not technically revenues or expenditures according to accounting rules, but these are other monies that come in and out of the general fund. And these account for such things as the set-asides on the non-voted debt that we have for those, the qualified school construction bonds that we issued in 2010. We're still setting aside monies every year to meet that principal and interest when it comes due. We also claim some indirect costs on some of the grants that we administer, the Food Service Fund. Sometimes we have general fund support for other funds, and that's what that reflects here, too. On transfers out, we see an increase of $240,000. That's partially some indirect costs. It's also partially some support for our Community Services Fund, which we'll talk again about later. But in a nutshell, when certain special revenue funds are not self-supporting, the general fund helps support those. And so that's what that, sometimes we abbreviate it to call OFSU, Other Financing Sources and Uses. And you'll see that also every year in our audit report as well. So all that is, in a nutshell, just to say that we anticipate our ending fund balance, where we will land June 30th of 2026. We do anticipate, and we will strive, to have a fund balance equivalent or greater than 15%, which, as we've discussed before, is best practices. Our board policy calls for 10%, so we will certainly exceed that. But that's equivalent to 15.1% of our expenditures, projected expenditures. So let's take a look at those expenditures in another format. So we have instructional expenditures, supporting services expenditures. Here, we share how are we going to use those dollars. So we categorize these. We talk about them every month in our Finance and Operations Committee. But we can see for next year, $190.7 million will be spent on salaries and fringe benefits. That is about 80... 80, thank you. Nearly 83% of our budget will be allocated to salaries and fringes. Thank you, Jodi. And then you can see, again, the levels of services that are provided to our district, and then supplies and equipment and such, for a grand total, once again, of $230.6 million. All right, so with that, we have a number of other funds. The general fund accounts for all of the things that we do to keep the district operating and teaching and learning in our classrooms, and all the supports that go into that, the Finance Department, the Human Resource Department, all around the district, all the things that make the day-to-day happenings go. But with that, we have a number of other funds that we must also adopt budgets for. So I'm going to turn this over to Jodi Melbourne to share with you what these funds are all about. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to walk you through some of the other funds the district has. And starting off at the top of the schedule, you'll see our Capital Projects Funds. And those are transactions related to the acquisition, construction, or improvement of our capital facilities. As you know, we can't spend general fund taxpayer dollars on improving our facilities. So the bond series that we issue, including the 2023 bond projects, as well as our Capital Improvement Fund, and the Capital Improvement Fund is basically made up of high insurance claim revenue that we've received back from our insurance company, as well as the sale of property. So we keep a separate fund to expend for capital improvement uses throughout the district. You'll see revenues.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that our bond programs that are voted in by our constituents, those dollars cannot be spent on teacher salaries, supplies, and those kinds of things. But we can use, we can use our general fund for school improvements. I just wanted to clarify that.
I said that backwards. We cannot, yes, here. Exactly. Next on the list, you'll see our Debt Service Fund, and that is the four mills we levy on property tax for principal and interest payments of our long-term debt. The Internal Service Fund is listed, and that is the district's self-insured medical plan, so that's the cost and employee contributions into, and the expenses related to healthcare costs. Then the special revenue funds listed are all our separate revenue generating funds, and they include the ACT-18 Center Program Fund, which is our center program for ASD and early-on services. The Community Services Fund, which is comprised of our tuition preschool, our extended day, and our community education departments. Our Food Service Fund. The Funded Project Funds, which is comprised of federal, state, and local grant dollars. And then our Student Activity Funds, which is the agency funds raised by our students and PTOs that we hold on deposit to be spent in the manner in which they were raised. And this chart reads very similar to the ones you've seen on the previous slides, where we're starting with our beginning balances. We recognize the revenue and expenditures expected, and we end up with ending balances in each of those funds. You'll notice on some of the special revenue funds, all of them actually in '25-'26, except the Student Activity Funds, we do not anticipate holding a fund balance carrying into the prior year. And that's just fine because we expect them, you know, we want them to spend the money that they're generating to fund the program. All right, our next slide. So we just have a little bit to say about truth in taxation. So the day-to-day teaching and overall classroom operations in public schools are funded by the State of Michigan Statewide Property Tax for Education, SET, of six mills, and the school district levies 18 mills on non-property residents and businesses, including the six mills on commercial personal property. The state school aid assumes that all districts levy the 18 mills, and it does not make up or cover the difference if we do not levy it. For the '25-'26 school year, the 18-mill operating levy is projected to generate $36,468,970 in operating funds for the district. We are grateful to the community for reauthorizing this millage in February of 2024 for 20 more years. And then finally... Stand by. The debt service tax levies pays the semi-annual principal and interest payments on voter-approved bond issuance, for example, the 2020 or 2023 bond series that we have right now. The debt service collections cannot be used for day-to-day operations of the district, such as salaries, utilities, supplies, et cetera. This tax is levied on all properties within the district's residential boundaries. The district is required by law to levy the necessary millage to meet the current year's debt service payments. For the '25-'26 school year, the 4.0-mill debt service levy is expected to generate $33,102,239. Thank you.
That concludes the truth in taxation portion of the public hearing. So our next steps as a district. We will continue to monitor the state aid legislation and respond to financial and program implications. We know that historically, in the last handful of years, typically, the state legislature would adopt a school aid fund omnibus budget package, generally, maybe by June 30th, but maybe July 1st, 2nd, or 3rd. We're hearing to the contrary. It may be a little bit later this year. So we're just going to continue to keep an eye and ear on that and learn and understand how that might impact our district. And we will continue to optimize our enrollment. We're constantly reaching out and communicating to our families that might have kindergartners or new families moving in that might have kindergartners or new families moving in, to be sure they're enrolling. And then we're going to also optimize our staffing levels to meet that enrollment need. We'll implement strategic use of grants and categorical funding, and we will prepare the mid-year budget amendment in the winter to account for all of the assumptions and all the things we didn't know, and bring those up to what came to be, as well as adjust for any legislation around school aid, anything else in that manner, our enrollment numbers, and all those things that we become aware of as we move through the fall. So with that, that concludes our public budget hearing. We look forward to taking your questions, Board, and we also look forward to comments from our public. Thank you.
Thank you for, give her a round of applause. This is the hardest part of the year with all these uncertainties happening around the state with budget. So it's a lot of work that goes into this hearing every June. So thank you for the work. We'll start with questions, comments from our student co-chairs.
First of all, I want to thank you and your team for all the hard work that's gone into this with a little concrete information that you have to base the budget on. Obviously, we aren't getting enough money to keep all our amazing programs and resources going on as we're steadily approaching this fiscal cliff. And I see the community here tonight is clearly here to support our budget meeting. So I was wondering, is there anything the community, both students and parents, can do to try and help cut the deficit?
Thank you. That's a very good question. I appreciate that. I would suggest maybe looking at the revenue side of the ledger. If you know a family is moving into our district, or encourage families to move into our district, and find out what it is that compels them maybe to take their students elsewhere, so that we can work toward implementing some programs or enhancing some of our programs, and perhaps boost our enrollment. I appreciate that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Amazing presentation, a lot of detail. Yeah, thank you.
Member Boss?
Thank you for this presentation. I know it was a lot of work. Thank you. And also to your department, but I have no questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just had one question about the retirements and staffing projections.
Sure.
Is that based on, like, prior trends, or how are you calculating that?
It is based on prior trends. And I want to just mention that our trend data is not like it was before COVID. We know that staffing, retirements, student enrollment, so many things are very different. But we always have a general idea around folks that might be eligible to retire, how many might of that group be likely to retire, what are the prospects and that market rate for new hires, what might that look like? It also depends on maybe the subject they teach. It might be in the Finance Department if we have retirement, or the Food Service Department, or what have you. So it's a blend, really, of district-wide positions that we anticipate. And I do believe that we will meet that, and maybe we already have. But that level of savings may not be known until we fill all those roles. So, yeah, thank you for that. Good question.
Appreciate it, and thanks for all your hard work on this. That's my only question.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
So I've had the pleasure of seeing this presentation in the Finance and Operations Committee and hearing about all these amazing things. It's why the Finance and Operations Committee is such an awesome committee. I'm always making a plug for that, just so you all know. So this is a good presentation, and thank you. A couple of things I want to call out is this is not a position that we can continue to be in. We have to make these cuts. We're going to have to make cuts in the future. The things that people can do to help support us is to make sure you continue to support your legislators, both in our community, but also in your friends and family that you have in other communities, to make sure that they're supporting public education. As you can see from the Michigan Finance School Research Collaborative, we don't have the money that we need to provide an adequate education. And that adequate education is not including transportation. So when you add transportation, that's even more money. So the resources that are necessary, this district has always done a very good job of doing, being very fiscally responsible, not spending all their budget dollars, those monies helping us and supporting us going forward. But it's really not sustainable. We want to make sure we support our educators. We want to make sure we support our facilities. We want to make sure we support our programs. And we're making cuts, as Josh mentioned, which are going to cause harm for us this year. We've been very strategic about those cuts to try to make sure that we identify the programs that have been successful, and cutting back the ones that maybe have not been quite as successful, but still valid. And we've made those, those hard and necessary cuts. So a little bit of a soapbox here, but I want to thank everybody for their collaboration. And to echo Josh's comment, if you know people that are not going to one of our schools, there are traditional, or there are charter schools in the community, tell them about what a great experience you've had at PCCS, and encourage them to join us, because we've got lots of opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Kehoe. So I know some of you did not come for the budget hearing, but as you're sitting there, standing there, you're learning a lot about how we get money, where does it go? A lot of transparency is part of the system here. If you want to know more, we have a transparency dashboard on our website. And as Treasurer Kehoe mentioned, if you want to dig deeper into where the money goes, I encourage you to go to Finance and Operations meetings. They're twice a month. You get to hear all sorts of the nitty-gritty about contracts, about the multiple bids that we have to go through, and how money is spent. As you heard from Jill, the money allocated is based on different pots and how we can spend that. So some of it's restricted. I know in the past, we've had people come in, well, you've got, you know, $50 million right there. Why can't you spend it on X, Y, and Z? We're prohibited because of that pot of money. So I hope you learned a lot. I'll save my question for the end, but let's move on to questions.
I'm also on the Finance Committee, so I do not have any more questions, but thank you for your presentation. It's nice and clear. Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. Just one quick question. To make it real, can you give me an idea of how many positions or people? Because we're going to have to cut $1.1 million in salaries. How many people roughly is that? Just roughly. And I'm not saying it's all teachers or all staff. It's just...
If I may restate your question, is your question regarding the identified budget reductions, the salaries, the 1.1 million of the 3.2 million, correct?
Yes.
So that is equivalent to about 15.1 FTE. But as I mentioned, many of those are roles that we never filled, or they're retiring, or as one-time programs, or those kinds of things. We really did work hard to minimize the number of staff that would have to be laid off or displaced.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your hard work on this, especially in light of all the uncertainty in the, in the state picture right now.
Thank you. My pleasure.
The only question I have is your projected numbers for enrollment, 15,883. Does that take into account our school of choice students?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And how many are you anticipating for that? Just an estimate of school of choice numbers that would be coming in.
410, I believe, this year, and so far, 207 have, 70 have enrolled.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks again for all of the details, all the work that you put in. I know this is an ever-changing graphs and charts, so you'll stay on top of this and keep us posted. Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll turn it over for...
The statistician has a correction to my...
237.
237.
Thank you. Well, thank you for this opportunity. I'll turn it back to the board to open it up for public comment.
Okay. All right, we have gone through the sheets that were submitted, and at this point, I don't see any sheets submitted for public comments for the financial part of the presentation. There's always next time. Remember, we meet twice a month, except for July. You can always come back and share some citizens' comments based on what you just learned. All right, so given that we have no citizens' comments for this portion of the meeting, we will go ahead, a little bit over time, but we'll move on to our general regular meeting. We don't need to take a break, right? Just move right into it.
Correct.
Do we need a motion to adjourn for that? No. Okay. Given that we're over the time, we don't need to adjourn. So we'll go ahead and get started with our regular meeting. We need to start with the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt our agenda and approve our consent agenda. It's action item 250678.
Looking for a second? Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe, seconded by Member Ahmed. Dr. Merritt, could you walk us through this portion of the agenda?
Yes. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We're on that unfortunate time of layoffs. As we just discussed, we have healthcare technicians to be considered for a layoff this evening, as well as teacher layoffs. As we know, historically, we really work across the summer and oftentimes are able to recall as soon as the next board meeting. So we're looking forward to continuing to maintain our champion teachers, if all possible, before the start of the school year. We also have some leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration, as well as the approval of minutes. That's from our regular meeting on May 27, 2025. We have first readings of the following policies. Policy 7310, that is the disposition of surplus policy, property, and also Policy 7450, which is property inventory. We have out-of-country field trips for your consideration. And finally, this evening, we have an action item. This is the consideration of the approval for a cooperative agreement with Novi Community School District. If you recall, for our elementary and middle school virtual academy program, last year, we went in partnership with Novi so that our students that are still seeking a virtual academy full-time could attend school through that virtual academy. So this is an annual agreement for your consideration to allow our students to continue to participate for the '25, '26 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes 6-0. All right, Mr. Medjune, please walk us through the retirements, hires.
Yes, no hires right now. So I really would like to speak about the retirements we have. We have three dedicated educators who retired from the district, and we'd like to give them, give them their shine a little bit here. We have Lisa Hedrick, who was an art teacher at West. She has been with the district since 1999. Carolyn Murphy, elected teacher at Discovery, who had been with the district since 1995. And Victoria Waisaki, who was a math teacher at Canton. She had been with the district since 2009. Can we give her some applause? And it's always a bittersweet to talk about retirement, because part of me, I'm jealous.
I want to thank our retirees. May you enjoy the next phase of your life and rest. You deserve it. So thank you for all that you've done for our community. All right, we are now moving on to another joyous part of this, is celebrating success, and that's going to be with Member Kehoe.
Good evening. I'm really excited to have all this audience to be able to hear this fantastic presentation on celebrating success. We're going to be honoring and recognizing an exceptional student leader whose actions speak louder than words. It was a great pride that we present a Stars Award to Avery Hansen, a Discovery Middle School student who exemplifies compassion, creativity, and community spirit in every way. Avery has been a true light within her school, someone who not only envisions a culture of kindness and inclusion, but actively builds it. Whether through the thoughtful posters she designs, the digital slides she creates, or the everyday interactions she has with her peers, Avery's message is consistent and powerful. Every student deserves to be, to feel seen and valued. Her creative work is more than decoration. It's a daily reminder of the kind of school climate she's helping to shape, one that prioritizes connection, celebrates empathy, and encourages students to uplift one another. What truly sets Avery apart is her initiative. She partners with peers, collaborates with counselors, and advocates for kindness, not just in words, but in her daily interaction with the school. She's a shining example of the PCCS learner profile at work. At this time, I'd like to invite Nicole Wakely to share a few reflections about Avery. Sorry, Joe Morris.
Yeah, so Nicole Wakely, she hit the submit button. But this is Avery Hansen. I'm Joe Morris, her counselor. And I just want to thank you all for honoring her at Discovery. We're very proud of what Avery did. And I just want to reiterate, this was her, right? She came to my office and said there were messages she felt like the school needed to see here, things that students needed to understand. So she created a list of reminders. She posted them all over the school, put them on lockers. She read them at the morning announcements. So she really took this on herself. She did a wonderful job, and we're very proud of her. Congratulations, Avery.
Avery, your commitment to creating a welcoming environment and encouraging others to live with kindness is precisely what a Star Award was created to celebrate. You remind us all that leadership isn't about titles. It's about the impact we have on one another. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire PCCS community, we extend our congratulations to Avery Hansen on this well-deserved recognition. This concludes tonight's Celebrating Success segment. Please join Dr. Laitanian-Giv in the hallway for a photo to commemorate this special recognition.
Do you want to say a few words? We'd love to hear from you if you have something. Thank you, Avery, for being a role model for all of us, including the adults. Okay, we are moving, if you have an agenda in front of you. We are in Section C at Board Committee Reports, and we're going to start with the President's Report. Since President Christensen isn't here, I took some time to just jot down a few words that I want to share with you. First, we want to congratulate our graduates. We had the honor and the privilege... Yes, let's give them a round of applause. We had the honor and privilege of awarding their diplomas over the last week. Sunday, we did three ceremonies. Last week, Thursday, we did Starkweather. Each of them, a very, very special event. It is, it's one of the best things that board members do. And I've talked to all of the board members, and I know Member...
Wester.
Wester, I'm forgetting. Member Wester was recovering from her knee surgery, so she was not able to join us for this joyous event. But I know the rest of us that were there, the whole time, we were smiling. We were just talking about the joy we saw in our students, our families. And thank you for all that you do for us, because you do bring us a lot of joy, and we are so proud of you. So I do want to ask my board colleagues if they want to share anything from the graduation ceremonies.
Oh, I was just saying, I just noticed, even though, as I was standing there to pass out their booklet, some of the kids just, you know, that weren't smiling. Once they got up there and took it, they just, all of a sudden, the smiles would come out, so... And then a lot of them were smiling before they even got up there, so... But it was nice to see that smile come out, so...
Yeah, I think graduation is one of the best things that we can do as a, as a school board member. It's celebrating the successes and those students that have had for their time that they've been with us. And it's just, you know, seeing them move on to that next chapter of life is just a real pleasure and privilege.
I really appreciate it, especially the Starkweather graduation. It's really special to be able to actually take the time to celebrate each student. And it's fantastic that we have such large graduating classes at the park, and the excitement is palpable. But I do wish that we had that time there also. So congratulations to all the graduates and their families. It was incredible.
I'll just say that at the Salem graduation, one of the young men paid me a compliment when I handed him his diploma. And I wish I could have found his mom and said, "Good job on this son who was so kind to me." But they were all so happy and joyous. It was just a great thing to witness, to see just the joy in their faces when they got their diplomas.
Yeah, and, you know, some of these students, many of them, have had a challenging journey given the last four years. So they've endured a lot. They persevered. They accomplished a lot. The stories, like Member Ahmed said, the stories were very touching. Again, they inspire us to continue doing better on behalf of all of you, the entire community, and the next generation. I also want to thank the staff. There were so many staff members. Dr. Merritt, your team did a phenomenal job with the setup, with everything, all the details, for those three ceremonies at Eastern to run smoothly. Wow, it takes teamwork. So thank you for doing all of that. I want to thank our security team for making sure that we are all safe, and we had a very enjoyable event. So thank you, everyone. So let's give everyone a round of applause. To continue the applause, I want to congratulate our retirees or people that have left for the next chapter of their phase. You have given a lot to our district. I know your legacy will live on, but I want to take this moment to personally thank you for your time and dedication to improving Plymouth Canton, and may you take the next journey to rest and focus on yourself. So thank you for your time. And last but not least, as a school year winds down, please take some time for you, students, staff, parents, to rest, to enjoy a book, travel a little, or just take some walks. But really do take care of yourselves. Thank you for being a part of our community. Thank you for being a part of our community. We will move on to the committee reports, starting with Student Performance and Achievement. Given that Member Wester was still recovering from her surgery, I will go ahead and give that update. We went through, I have to enlarge this. So we went through our annual data review. So every June, we do a data dig, data dive into what did we do this past year in this 24-25 school year? What went well? What does the data show us? We look at all sorts of data. So we spent about an hour and 15 minutes digging through that data, and of course, there were some joyous moments, some moments of pride, but there were some challenging moments where we saw some gaps that continued to persist. So the board will get a look at that data presentation. All of you will have a chance to look at that data presentation at the next meeting. I encourage all of you to come back and go through that data presentation with us. We also discussed out-of-country field trips, and we will develop the next Student Performance and Achievement calendar for the committee meetings once the president has finalized the committees for next year, and that happens in July. All right, moving on to Finance and Operations. Oh, I'm sorry, no, moving on to Policy. That is again me. We did not meet today or since our last update, so I have no updates for this meeting. We will move on to Finance and Operations with Member Kehoe.
The Policy meeting is Tuesday, June 24th, 5:30 PM. And people are welcome to come, but it's not as cool as Finance and Operations.
It is, it is cool.
So our Finance and Operations meeting, we met last Thursday, and we had a little bit of adjustment in that meeting because we met at Salem High School so that the board members could participate in the graduation for Starkweather that was held that evening. We discussed the budget proposal that we went through this evening. We discussed the budget amendment that we'll be going through next, and we talked about some purchase of cameras for the CTE areas at the park. We, our next meeting is here in this room on Thursday, June 19th, at 5:00 PM, and I encourage everybody to come out and see the excitement.
Thank you, Treasure Kehoe. We are now moving on to Student Voice in Action with Josh and Arjun.
So SVA hasn't met since the last board meeting, which was on May 19th. The next meeting will be next school year, though the exact date is still being determined. We hope everyone has a good summer, and we look forward to next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for serving as co-chairs for SVA. We appreciate your involvement in that and bringing information back to this boardroom and taking information from here back to the committee. All right, now on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I want to join the team in congratulating the class of 2025. I want to share some of our amazing students and our students. That will be Starkweather's graduation, and you heard it took place on Thursday, followed by Canton's graduation there. Then we have Plymouth and Salem. In total, we had close to 1,500 students that graduated over the past year. I will tell you, something we talk about in terms of pride, as some of us are getting a little bit more seasoned, we know that we have to turn our world over, our local community over to our young people, and I cannot be more proud and just ready for them to take the reins. They are incredibly talented and resilient and resourceful and kind and gracious and joy-filled, all the things that you've heard this evening. You just can't sometimes believe in such young people. They have learned to use their voice and really advocate for their space and their environment, and I'm just so proud of them. So we will hate to see them go, but so glad of what the future has in store for our young people. And I want to thank our incredible team of teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our community for really just providing that nurturing school environment in order for our students to thrive, and most importantly, thank you. I want to thank our families, our parents, because you have entrusted your children's education and our care, and we don't take that lightly, and it really just keeps us motivated to keep going forward. So again, we just congratulate, and I thank the board members for everybody being able to be there to give out those diplomas. That is probably the best job that you have, absolutely, so everybody did a great job. I can't ever miss an opportunity to brag on our students, so I do want to take one moment to shout out our students from our honors vets during the Memorial, the honored vets during the Memorial Day Parade. These are students in Chris Belcher's history class at PCEP. They spent the past two months researching local World War II veterans, visiting the Great Lakes National Cemetery and Michigan Heroes Museum, and presenting their findings as a final exam as part of a documentary film by filmmaker Mark Saloon. Their journey culminated on Memorial Day when they marched in the Plymouth Parade, holding portraits of the veterans they honored before attending a ceremony at Veterans Park. I'm inspired by the work of our students in researching and honoring our veterans, whose service to our nation should not be forgotten. Please join me. And seeing the stack of citizens' comments and the fans that are going on, I'm going to cut my report short this evening, so we have some time for your voices, but I do want to say, as we approach the last day of the 24-25 school year, I see some of my teaching staff saying, "Woo-hoo!" Just take a look at our amazing students. They have had a fabulous year, just filled with so many accolades and accomplishments. We've tried to do a job of just capturing daily on our social reels and our media. There's so much good news, it's almost impossible to share so much, but we will continue to do it and continue to, to just really amplify the experiences of our students. Again, we're so thankful for our staff for creating the environment for our students. We're thankful for our families, and most importantly, we're so thankful and grateful for our young people and very proud of them. So wonderful accolades to all. Congratulations for the end. I'm not going to jinx this because I've got a few hours tomorrow, but the end to a wonderful school year. Looking forward to a restful summer, recharge, and hey, they're all yours. We'll see you, see our students.
All right, if you're new to this, we have two portions of the citizens' comments. The first portion is 30 minutes, and each person gets three minutes. If we don't get through the stack in 30 minutes, we will do the rest at the end of the agenda, and that's going to be under Section G.
It's a relatively short agenda this evening.
Okay, it is short, okay.
Yeah, there's only, I think, one more presentation.
As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak without interruption. This is your time. The board will not engage in a back and forth. Again, we listen respectfully. And also, keep in mind, do not name any individuals if you are, if you have a concern or a complaint about them. You can always submit those names to Dr. Merritt and the board, and we will take those into consideration. If you do have a request in terms of you want something resolved or you want to hear from administration, Dr. Merritt and her team will reach out to you with that request. So at this point, I'm going to ask Diane Robertson to start a timer. Please adhere to this timer. It's three minutes for everyone. We want to make sure we give time to everyone. All right, so the first one I have, and we go in order of how they were received, so, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, and please, when you do come up, say it the right way if I mispronounce it. Shannon Hilliker? Is Shannon here?
It may take a while.
Shannon? Up there.
Good evening. Good to go? Okay. So I'm the parent of a 19-year-old trans daughter. When she came out to my husband and I almost three, five years ago, our knowledge about what that meant was very limited, maybe a movie character or some sensationalized news story. To my knowledge, I'd never met a trans person. As I started on my journey to learn, I was overcome with intense fear. First and foremost, fear for my kid's safety and fear that people wouldn't see her for the amazing human that she is. My daughter didn't want to come out beyond our immediate family. My fear for her safety drove me to support that decision, but it also kept me from being able to speak out. I couldn't ask for support from my friends or my neighbors. I listened to conversations without being able to share that my daughter was one of those kids that people were tossing so much hate at. My fear kept me from sharing what I was learning also in my crash course in how to be the parent that my kid needed. I live about 30 minutes of here, from here, so I'm not a stakeholder in your district, but I assure you, there are parents like me who are, and I wanted to come here tonight and speak up for all the people in your district that aren't able to speak up for their kids. Kids' ability to go to school as themselves doesn't cost you anything. It doesn't take anything away from other kids, and it doesn't add work to your already overwhelmed or overworked staff. This district attracts families because of the great options and the great, and the quality programs for kids. I've envied the experiences of kids that go here. I mean, way back in the 90s, my friends and I in the Novi High School marching band couldn't wait to watch your marching band at every show. We were so envious of just the performances that you put on, and I still, to this day, if I get the opportunity to watch your band, I go and watch. This policy has been in place, your policy has been in place for several years. I'm wondering if it's harmed any kids. The people speaking against this will always have the loudest voices. They'll yell, threaten, and spread information that's not based on facts or on their, or on any lived experience. They want you to fear kids like mine. It's easy to know who claims to be harmed by these policies, but I'd say the better question to be asked, and one that's impossible to answer, is how many kids it's helped. In a world that continues to tell our kids that they're less than or not deserving of, how many kids are helped coming to a school with a policy like yours? How many parents in the middle of their own journey are able to exhale just a little bit, sending their kids to school, knowing that their district has their back? You'll never know how big a number that is. You guys provide a top-notch education in this district. Please continue to provide that school experience for all kids and their families. Help them all feel welcomed and supported in the Plymouth Canton schools.
Thank you. Next up is Robin Mitchell.
Good evening, members of the PCCS school board. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak today. I come before you to discuss something vital, the support and inclusion of LGBTQ plus students in our district. Plymouth has been my home for over 33 years, and my children were fortunate to have received amazing educations through PCCS and benefited from the strong, inclusive learning environment. I'm asking you to continue to support this strong and inclusive learning environment. As leaders in education, you have the power to shape an environment where every student feels safe, respected, and valued. Schools are more than just places of learning. They are spaces where young people develop confidence, identity, and purpose. For LGBTQ plus students, this journey is often met with challenges, including higher rates of bullying, mental illness, and academic setbacks from the lack of acceptance. But we have the ability and the responsibility to change that. Supporting LGBTQ plus students is about humanity. It's about ensuring that every student, regardless of who they are, has equal access to a safe and empowering education. It's about setting an example that says our district stands for fairness, dignity, and respect. I urge you to consider to continue proactive steps to ensure that all students feel seen and supported. When we invest in inclusion, we invest in the success of our schools and ultimately the future of our community. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for considering the voices of all students.
Next up is John Scutnik. Please, I apologize. Oh, good. And also, as, as you speak, everyone, please speak closer to the mic so we can all hear. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. My name is John Scutnik. My wife and I live here in Canton, where we raised our three boys. All three boys went through the PCCS school system, Workman Elementary, Discovery Middle School, Plymouth High School, the park. Our two older sons are graduated from Wayne State and Michigan State, where our youngest followed a path of Washington Hall Community College. The kids made for a lot of interactions with school faculty, all the educators in the system. I cannot say enough about the positive experience we had in the school system when looking at the end results and the encounters that we had along the way. The comments made by some of the speakers at the prior board meeting were enlightening. Outsiders brought in, snuck in, to try and instill fear. Talk of furries and shared bathrooms and scary books and the evil DEI, all falsehoods where the only intent has been to weaponize that, the term, through promotions of these falsehoods that are constantly debunked. We're all here this evening representing a wide range of ethnicities that is only possible due to an awareness and the pursuit of DEI. Regardless of what we want to call it, this did not happen by accident. At the last board meeting, one of the speakers quoted Dr. Martin Luther King. One day, his child would not be judged by the color of his skin, but the content of their character. That can't happen when they're told, when people are told how to judge someone by the color of their skin, or because they're different, or who they love, or the language they speak. I applaud the efforts of the school board to encourage inclusion and show our children that people who are different than them should not be feared, but embraced and understood. Unfortunately, this isn't something that all of them are learning at home. This isn't brainwashing, this is compassion. I heard it said that the school should be focused on reading, writing, and arithmetic, but education is also about learning how to communicate, because all of those traditional subjects are useless unless you're able to communicate them with people who are both like you and not like you. I was also stunned at the level of hypocrisy. God will judge you while they're doing all the judging. Someone who identifies as a religious person by preaching hatred and intolerance, upset with cancel culture while pulling books from libraries. One of our sons is gay. We knew it before he knew it. It wasn't his choice, no more than he could have chosen the color of his skin or the continent he was born on, or if his family would be rich or poor. It's just who he is. We knew he was safe here at the park. We never cared about who he would love. We did and do fear others who will judge him and possibly hurt or kill him, not because of the content of his character, but simply because who he loves. I am not suggesting that PCCS is perfect, or policy should not be reviewed, but it should be done with the intent to bring people together, not find ways to separate them. I'm going to skip since I got a minute. I may be off. I heard earlier there's about 16,000 students, which means about 32,000 parents of varying backgrounds. Do you want to talk about DEI? How do you manage such a large, diverse group without equality and including everyone? Thank you.
Next up is Ross Rogers.
Thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to speak here today. I'm Ross Rogers. I graduated from Plymouth High School in 2022. I am a transgender adult, and I was once a transgender child. I socially transitioned during high school, but I knew who I was since I was 11. Getting through school in this district was tough. Harassment was severe and frequent. When the board adopted its policy in support of trans students, it was a lifeline. I don't know how I would have made it through school without it. It was tough for queer kids when I was in school, and I cannot imagine how tough it must be now. For many of you in this room, this is just a culture war. For queer and trans kids, this is our lives. For those who seek to repeal, to repeal this policy, I have little to say to you. Just know, I just hope that the culture war was playing with, was worth playing with our lives. To the board members in support of this policy, I thank and commend you for defending our lives while under attack. You will be remembered for doing the right thing. For any queer and trans students in this room, please hold on. You are valued, and you will grow up to live a beautiful adulthood. Thank you.
Please say your name correctly if I said it wrong.
Hi, my name is Anthem Pastalis, and I was a long-term substitute at the park from September 2017 to December of 2021, when I left to pursue a graduate degree in library and information sciences. I've been back in Michigan for about a year now, and I've run into a number of my former students throughout Plymouth and Canton who have stopped me to talk. One thing that I'm struck by again and again are the students who thank me for making them feel honored and respected for who they are. As an educator, my philosophy has always been that I want to be the adult that I needed in school. I'm queer and trans, and I struggled in school and at home, knowing who I was was not accepted. It's an isolating, lonely feeling, hiding the very core of who you are from the people around you. The bullying and names are soundtracks that play over and over in our heads, telling us that we are vile. Even now, at 32, I know that some of my family loves me in spite of my identities, which I also know is a better situation than many of our students face. which I also know is a better situation than many of our students face. While I never talked about being LGBTQ plus with students, I always made sure to call students by the names they had chosen and the pronouns they wanted. These simple actions of showing respect for who a student knows they are, and it communicates to them that I'm a safe person to talk to. In graduate school, I learned of Jean Sims Bishop's metaphor of children's literature as mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. But I think that we can apply that to our schools. Through faculty, curriculum, and peer interactions, our schools should be a place where students see their experiences and have them honored. They should be a place where our students learn of experiences that are not their own and will never be their own, and that those experiences need to be respected, even if they don't understand them. And finally, that our students are exposed to and shows, shown that futures they never thought of are possible. That they have futures where they are safe and loved and honored and respected. At the end of the day, we want all of our children alive and happy and content. But I have had students at The Park who almost didn't make it because they felt rejected and as though no one ever understood them or cared about who they really were. As long as we continue to debate the humanity of our LGBTQ plus students, especially our trans students, and argue that they are not worthy of respect, I will always have to worry about them. What the adults say in this room is being watched and sets the tone for the chatter in the halls of our school. Please show our community that bigotry and hatred will not be tolerated or supported. I implore you to continue your work towards affirming and supporting and protecting our trans students. We are one community. Care for part of it is care for the whole. And everyone deserves not to just survive, but thrive. Thank you.
Next up is Austin Mercado.
Hello, good evening. Um, I was, I came here to talk about, uh, the firing of Coach Goodrich. He was the Salem cross-country coach and a lot of us found that-
Sorry. Please do not name any names. You can talk about your concerns, but the names can be emailed to Dr. Mayor and the board.
Okay, sorry. Um, a lot of us found that, uh, there was not enough reason for him to be fired. And a lot of us feel this is unfair, not only to our coach, but also to a lot of our athletes. We have more people that have more to say than I do, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jason Mercado. Again, as a reminder, please do not name any individuals if you have a concern about them without their consent.
I think you're going through the names reverse from those who got-
You have it backwards.
Yeah.
The people who came in last are speaking first, right?
Yeah.
I'm being told, no?
It's fine.
Yeah, there's people that got here-
Yeah, I flipped them over. Okay. I apologize. They're given to me, so I flip them over and go through that. Sorry, come on, uh, Jason Mercado, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm here on behalf of my son as, and his teammates as well to, uh, and we'll email you the, uh, the names of the parties involved. But our cross-country, country coach who has, and track and field coach, who has taught our kids a lot about discipline, um, about, uh, hard work. Um, he was let go or his contract was not renewed. And, um, based on, uh, some feedback that he was hard to work with, according to, um, the athletic director. Uh, based on the, um, some discussions I had with coach, uh, he advocated for, uh, his, uh, his team. Um, it's very difficult when you have a, uh, an athletic director who is primarily a football guy. Um, they, they tend to focus in on, on that sport and, um, uh, other sports. Uh, have to fight a little bit harder in order to, uh, to get the attention that they need. Um, and our coach was not afraid to go request that, um, that stuff from the athletic department. And, um, because of that, he was labeled as somebody that was difficult to, uh, to work with. Um, uh, most important thing is that he is a, uh, a man of integrity that, um, uh, he does a lot for the kids to, to help them grow and develop. And these are skills that extend beyond sport. These are things that will benefit them throughout their lives. Um, uh, we all face adversity and, uh, and he's giving them the tools that they need so that they may be successful in whatever they choose to, uh, to do when they are adults. So I thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration and helping to reinstate this coach.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Savin.
Hi. You got my name correct, so I won't repeat it. Uh, I've lived in Canton since twenty eighteen and my son proudly attends Erickson Elementary. Go Frogs! Uh, I'm here today to express in the strongest language possible my support for the, uh, Board of Education, the school district, and your ongoing efforts to support and ensure every child has the opportunity to learn in a safe and supportive environment. The district's community to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and especially, especially its support of LGBTQ plus youth. It's, it's not just admirable, it's a strength to our community. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQ plus youth who have even one accepting adult in their lives are forty percent less likely to report a suicide attempt. That statistic alone underscores the life-saving impact of inclusion and the policies that this board has adopted. According to Psychology Today, college students exposed to diverse and inclusive environments develop stronger critical thinking skills and show higher academic motivation. I think we all want that for our students, right? I use just a couple of findings. There's so much research about this, but I use just a couple of these findings to illustrate what many of us already know. Supporting differences doesn't just keep children safe. It prepares them for success in the world beyond the classroom. I admit, there's always room for growth. But today, PCCS has my full support for this work. And I am proud to have voted for the, for many of the board members here today because of this work. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Next up is Beth Vaughn.
Who was that?
Beth Vaughn.
Hello, and thank you everyone for coming. Um, so many of the previous speakers echo my sentiments, so I will just jump right into my story. Um, I moved into Canton in two thousand and five. I researched communities that were diverse, not only economically, but socially and culturally. And I am proud to have called Canton my home since two thousand and five. My children grew up in the Plymouth Canton School System, and they enjoyed a rich and full academic year, years. Um, my youngest graduated a handful of years ago. So my children are very different. My one child, my oldest, is now an English teacher in the community. My youngest child is, uh, in the cuisine industry, so he is a chef and also teaches private cooking classes. My children enjoyed many of the rich programs, clubs, and in, and benefited from the policies that are here in the Plymouth Canton School District. One of my children is transgender. And what I can tell you is none of the programs, or the policies, or the books in the library, or the clubs that the children were able to participate in, none of those things made my children who they are. They are who they are. But what those policies, programs, books, academics, what those things did for my children was provided them with a safe, inclusive, educational way so that they were able to grow and thrive and become who they are. None of that mattered. What matters is what we choose to include and who we choose to include and not who we choose to exclude or see as, uh, the other. So please continue with your policies and continue to be the driving force behind equity, inclusion, and diversity. Thank you.
Next up is Saib Chima.
Good evening, members of the board. So this is a little bit off topic. This is about our coach and him getting fired. So my name is Saib Chima and I'm a junior at Salem High School. I run for both our cross-country teams and our track and field teams. And I'm here on behalf for our coach, a coach who has made a huge impact on me and my teammates. Coach has been a huge part of my journey since freshman year. So during my cross-country season, I hit a huge mental block that destroyed my racing. But Coach never gave up on me. He guided me, supported me, and helped me push through it. By the end of this season, I ran a personal best and qualified for regionals, something that a couple months earlier felt impossible. That dedication didn't stop in the off-season. While most coaches, while most teams were taking this winter off, Coach was driving over an hour from Pickney every single day to train us, in the cold, just because he believed in what we could do. I ended up qualifying for both the indoor and outdoor state championships because of this support. I wasn't the only one. This spring, eleven Salem, eleven Salem athletes qualified for the state meet in the track. A new, a new school record. This kind of success doesn't just happen. It was a direct result of training, structure, and belief Coach brought in our team. But what truly set Coach apart was how he treated every single athlete. He has a saying, "Everyone is varsity," and he lived that out. Every race, he took the time to talk to each runner, JV, or varsity about their performance. He gave us individual feedback, courage, and made us all feel seen and valued. That kind of individual attention is rare, and it's something that means a lot to every one of us. He also put Salem on the national map. Last year, journalists ranked high school teams by how many runners had broken five minutes in the mile, and we ranked thirty-third in the nation. We beat programs like Harriman, who were national runner-ups in cross-country. That's how, that's how far we have come with Coach. It is disappointing to see the athletic director move, remove Coach without giving any clear reason or explanation. Since freshman year, I haven't seen the athletic, athletic director at regionals, conference meets, or even the state meet. But instead, Coach was there, training us, coaching us, and helping us succeed. To lose someone with over forty years of experience, who has coached Olympians and national championships, is frustrating and ultimately disheartening. Listen, this isn't just about losing a coach. It's about losing the direction, support, and belief system that's helped us made who we are. Coach didn't just care about our results, he cared about us as people. And losing that kind of leader without any clarity has left their team confused and discouraged. I hope the board will really consider this decision, what this decision means, not just to the program, but to the students who grow, who have grown under his guidance. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Gagandip Chima.
Good evening, good board members, and thank you so much for allowing me to talk tonight. My name is Gagandip Chima, and I'm the mother of Sahib Chima, who just spoke, a rising senior for Salem Cross Country Team and Track Team. I'm here tonight because my son, his future, is directly related and tied to a one man. His name is Coach JG. And I got his permission before I can mention his name. Um, I have a petition with me from signed by parents and students, and I have his information that he would like to share attached to it because he was not given any chance to speak. And he did not tell us to come here and speak on his behalf. It's all our, us doing it, but I pressed him because we want him to be, um, told to everybody, like, what's going on, what happened. Um, a year ago, my son was stuck in his mind and his, in his heart. He was battling mental blocks that no one could ever seem to reach. But Coach Goodrich did. He didn't just coach him, he saw him. He gave him time during breaks, trained him in off-season, checked in when he wasn't required to. He became the voice in my son's life that said, "You are capable, keep going." This wasn't just coaching, it was mentorship, healing, and transformation. And my son listened. He's now running stronger, yes, but more importantly, he's standing taller. He believes in himself again, and that's because of Coach Goodrich. Now, as my son prepares for his senior year, he's finally in a place where he sees a future for himself, a future Coach Goodrich helped build. And now we are being told that the very man who brought him this far won't be allowed to see him through the finish line. I ask you, what message are we sending? That experience, dedication, and genuine care don't matter? That the voices of these young men who have thrived under his guidance don't matter? So when I hear that his contract wasn't renewed, I don't just feel confused, I feel heartbroken. Coach Goodrich didn't just build runners, he built character. He gave our kids something rare, consistency, honesty, and belief. That kind of impact doesn't show up on any spreadsheets. It shows up in changed lives. To many of our boys, he is the reason they run. Please don't take that away. Thank you.
We have one more citizens' comments before our time is up for this portion of citizens' comments. So this is the last one for this portion. Jim Hanner.
Good afternoon, PCCS School Board. My name is Jim Hanner, and I'm here on behalf of my son, Jack Hanner, and the Salem Cross Country Team and Track Team for the reinstating of their coaches, the head coach of Salem Track and Cross Country Teams. I myself personally was a state runner, state qualifier, all-state runner in high school and continued my career on the college at Western Michigan. Cross country is a sport that requires a tremendous amount of time and dedication from both the student and the coach. These kids begin training on the last day of school and they do not continue, or they do not stop until the school year ends again. Basically, their school, their running career goes completely around the clock. Might take Christmas off. Um, there's a tremendous amount of time and preparation required for a successful student. As a college, as a college athlete in the nineties, I had heard of Coach's reputation as an outstanding coach. I knew of where he coached, and I was also recruited in college, so I knew of Coach. Um, when my son decided to run cross-country, I was excited that Coach was going to work with him. This past cross-country season, my son fell ill and collapsed at the end of his regional race as he crossed the finish line. He immediately was taken to the emergency room. Coach, Coach was nothing but caring, considerate and concerned for his well-being. He followed up with me on a consistent basis and always had Jack's best interests in heart. He truly was a tremendous, he is truly a tremendous influence on my son. As a student, athlete, and a young man, this level of coaching goes beyond a paycheck. It's about the kid and the love of the sport. So let's return our sense, our, let's return to common sense. We have a tenured coach with a great work- We have a tenured coach with a great work experience, solid performance of reviews from the athletic department the past four years, consistent progression of athletes and their performances, state qualifiers in track and cross-country this past year, one in cross-country and 11 in track and field. What other sport here can say that? He is also a good role model, and most of all, he's just a good, plain human being. With these things in mind, we ask that you help consider the reinstatement of Coach so that he can continue building the cross-country and track program with his hard work in student athletes for what he has started. Let the gentleman finish. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Jim Hanner, right?
Yes.
I want to make sure that we are done with this portion. All right, so we do have to go back to our regular business agenda, but I'm being told it's pretty light, so we will get to all of you for your citizens' comments. All right, let's start with the administrative reports and recommendations. Back to Jill Minnick.
This portion of our presentation will focus on the final budget amendment for this current school year. You may recognize some of the features from our earlier presentation. Because we have already presented on some historical information, we've presented our connection to the dynamic plan, and we've pretty much given a highlight of how this might roll into next year, this presentation is much shorter. We've presented our mid-year amendment in March, so this is an extension where we are just tightening up those numbers. We're coming into June and presenting where we are projecting to land, both on the revenue and expenditure side of the budget. So with that, we will review our general fund summary, we'll take a look at our fund balance, as well as looking at the other funds summary. Just like our 2526 budget for next year, by law, we must make any final budget adoptions by June 30th. So here we have just a summary overview of the general fund budget amendment. Again, the format is the same, our sources of revenue at the top, expenditures, and then a net change in fund balance. The first column is our audited actual figures from last year, with which we start. We have the mid-year amended budget that was adopted in March, and then we have our projected and recommended final amended budget. The far-right column, again, is that variance, increase or decrease column. So I'll just bring your attention to just a few highlights here. You can see on that total revenue line, we're only adjusting our projections of revenues to be collected by $13,000. We don't anticipate much change overall, but you see a shift of dollars. We're reducing our projection of local source dollars, which is primarily property tax and income from interest on investments, and a shift to increase the state source revenues. We have seen an increase in some of the allocations of the categoricals, retirement funding, and such. But net bottom line is only $13,000. On the expenditures, we see in that variance column then, some shifts in instructional expenditures, supporting services, and then the other financing uses. We see a decline in our anticipated instructional dollars there expenditures. We attribute that largely to perhaps some shifts in grants, where maybe we were able to pull some more funding, rather, assign some staff salaries over to grants, which are accounted for in the funded fund, or contracts where we thought we would fill those vacancies, but we filled some different vacancies. It's a mixture there, but it's primarily spread across many, many line items, but a decrease to salaries and benefits, an increase to the supporting services line items. The net change then in our total expenditures is a decrease of only $118,000. So really, not much variance at all from our mid-year amendment. We're still on course with that. That's been demonstrated in our monthly financial summaries presented at the FNO Committee as well. But let's take a closer look at that fund balance. It's at the very bottom of the previous slide, so here we'll take a closer look. Again, just recapping, total revenues, total expenditures, and that anticipated net change then, when we increase revenues by $13,000 and we decrease expenditures by $118,000, then we anticipate adding to the fund balance the sum of $132,000. When we add that total variance to our, rather, not just the variance, but rather, the total difference, rather, in revenues and expenditures, we have a planned use of our fund balance of $8.2 million. When we add that to our beginning fund balance of $49.1 million, then we anticipate landing at June 30th with an ending fund balance of $40.9 million. $40.9 million is equivalent to, or rather, 18.2% of expenditures. So well above and beyond our board policy and best practices. So we saw earlier in our 2526 budget presentation the need to find some reductions in order to stay above the 15% best practices figure, knowing that we had other costs that were going to be coming our way and some reductions in revenues. So here we are at the cusp of that fiscal cliff, as people call it. We're at an, we project an 18.2% fund balance as we end the year. We also know that typically, there are unspent dollars in our budgets, so it's likely that our fund balance could be larger, yet human nature is that, as we know we have budget reductions for next year, sometimes folks might say, "Well, then I'm going to spend everything I have in my budget this year." So that remains to be seen, but regardless, this is our best projection based on trends, whatever trends may still be pertinent after COVID, and our experience with staffing and all the expenditures and encumbrances and purchase orders that have been left. So that concludes the overview of the general fund. I'll turn it over to Jody once more for the other funds.
All right, as we dive into our other funds, you'll see our capital project funds, which for the 2425 school year was comprised of the 2020 bond project, the 2023 series of bonds, and our capital improvement fund. You'll notice in there that our 2020 bond project, bond series, has been fully spent out by June 30th, so we will end the year with a zero fund balance in the 2020 bonds, and that's why you did not see those on the 2526 budget projection we'll be fully spending in the 2023 bond series for next year. Our debt service fund, with some inflows of revenues and some expenditures equal to our principal and interest payments, and an ending fund balance there. Our internal service fund, with revenues brought in through employee deductions and expenses within the fund, with an ending fund balance of just over $3 million. And then our special revenue funds, again, the Act 18 Center Program Fund is our center programs for ASD and early-on services. We anticipate revenue equal to expenditures in that fund. The community services fund also will end with a $0 fund balance. The food services fund with a nominal balance funded projects, which again is made up of our federal, state, and local grant funds. We anticipate revenue to match expenditures there. And then our student activity funds with a nominal balance left in those funds at the end of this school year.
So that is a very short, but hopefully informative, overview of our final budget amendment projections and recommendations, and we're happy to take any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start with Member Westra. Questions, comments?
No questions. I thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Treasure Kehoe?
So I want to congratulate the team. If I did my calculations right, it's about 1/20th of a percent in our budget, so that's pretty good to be able to land that there. And I hope there's additional savings that we see that will help offset the expenditures that we have next year. And I know we've always had great success in supporting our teachers and our entire staff, that when they do make spending, that they don't have to spend that full budget, that we're there to support them in additional needs that they have in future years, and that provides more fiscal responsibility. So thank you for this, and thank you for the short presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Ahmet?
Thank you for all your hard work. No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, no questions.
Thank you. I might add one more comment. Member Kehoe, your comments reminded me that we should share, that the audit will commence this summer. It lasts from officially July 7th through October. So it will be in November that we'll be able to present those audit reports, and then we will come to understand what those variances might be, from those actual expenditures and revenues, to what we've budgeted and explained those variances, to help us inform our work as we move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Arjun.
No questions, thank you.
Josh?
No worries. I also have no question.
So sorry.
No worries. I also have no questions, but thank you and your team for all the hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much for being right, like, very close, as Treasure Kehoe said. Really well done, and thank you, Dr. Merritt, to all of your team for working on all of the moving parts to get to this point.
It's our pleasure. Thank you so much.
All right, we are now going to be moving on to the vote for the adoption of this budget amendment. So I'm looking for a motion to consider approval of a resolution to adopt the 2024-2025 Final Budget Amendment, first and final reading.
Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to adopt the 2024-2025 Final Budget Amendment. This is Action Item 250679, and it is a first and final reading.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by Treasure Kehoe and seconded by Secretary Westra. We already had a discussion on this, but if there are any last-minute questions, comments? Okay. Call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Motion passes 6-0. All right, next part is teaching and learning with Beth.
We have an action item for that.
Yeah, one more.
One more. Let me go back to my enlarged screen. Oh, thank you. We have another final reading, so I'm looking for a motion to consider approval of a resolution to purchase security cameras for CTE areas at PCE. Final reading for Action Item 25-0680.
Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase security cameras for the CTE areas at PCE. This is a final reading, and the action item is 250680.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasure Kehoe, I heard seconded by Member Westra first, so any discussion on this, given that we already had a discussion at the last meeting about this, but we still have a couple minutes? Okay. Call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes 6-0 for Action Item Number 25-0680. Okay, now we go on to Beth for teaching and learning.
The final reading?
Yep.
So it's final reading.
Oh, that one too. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider approval of a resolution for a new course proposal, "Understanding and Using AI Responsibly." This is a final reading, and the action item is 250681.
In the agenda, it actually says 260681, so, but it is 250681.
Thank you.
Can you say those numbers again?
Yeah, so I just noted in the agenda, it says Action Item 260681, but it's actually 250681, as indicated on the memo itself.
And that's what I read.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that correction.
Okay. All right, looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It was moved by Treasure Kehoe, seconded by Member Ahmet. Any questions, comments on this? Came out of SPA, we had thorough discussion in the SPA committee, we talked about last time. I know some of you are really excited about this course, so we will get you updates. All right, I'll call.
Do you have a quick comment?
Sure.
If I can make it.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to compliment the team, because it's really exciting to see the district and the educators come forward with proactive ideas versus having to react, so really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just to reiterate again, I think we are the only school, or only district that is offering an AI course at this time. Is that?
I'm not sure if we're the only, but we're one of the first to adopt the policy and start with the programs.
Yep, so many folks started with, worked with adults, and we've done work with adults as well, but our adults have also come forward together to create a really exciting course for students. And again, just really quickly, it's also module-based, so they can be used not just with this class, but we can also use it across our grade levels and content areas as pieces. So, thank you.
And can you remind us, when will this be available for students to register?
Yep, it will be available for students to register and take second semester of next year, so, but we'll start putting it in student schedules in the upcoming year, so.
Great. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes 6-0 for Action Item Number 25-0681. Okay. All right, we are now back to citizens' comments for the overflow portion of it. Same rules apply, three minutes, and please be respectful to the people speaking, and we'll have a timer up there, and we will start with Jack Hanner.
That was the last person, who was that?
No, that was, that was Jim.
Good evening, PCCS School Board. My name is Jack Hanner, currently finishing out my sophomore year of high school. Ran for this coach for two years, I can confidently say, through the highs and lows of those two years. He's been there to help me develop as a person, immature through my experience, and always checked up on me when I'm sick in my lows, made sure to congratulate me many times in my highs. After eighth grade, I disliked running a lot and felt partially obligated to do it because I'm really good at it, and Coach had me running a lot over the summer, and I found a great group of teammates through this bonding time, and we went through lots of activities through that summer, such as going out to the Pekni rec area and running with the team and having breakfast after, or doing a team car wash right before the season started. Coach resulted in many of my friendships and gave me lots of confidence because of running, and motivates me to do better for him and the people around me as an athlete and a person. Coach should be reinstated as Salem Cross Country and Track Coach, not only because of his large resume, but his personality and his relationship with the members of his team. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Lazarin Carroll.
Hi, my name is Lazarin. You were really close. I am a graduate of Plymouth High School in 2009, so I'm pretty old, I guess, compared to some of the other speakers.
Wow.
I'm a transgender man, and I just want to first and foremost comment that I don't really know what happened last year, because I wasn't here for that, but because it's spread around the community, I'm here to not speak for the transgender community, but as a person who is a part of it. The fact that we have people from an outside state being paid to come in here and talk is, it's foolish, they're not part of the community, and PCE is not a single religious school, so the fact that we're sitting here being proselytized to by people who are paid, which is insane, against Jesus's teachings, I just, I would hope that the people on the board understand how foolish that is. The other half of what I wanted to speak on is, we get people asking all the time, you know, "Why do we need a Pride Month? Why, you know, why do these people need special treatment?" I don't understand why it's considered special treatment to allow people to exist as they are. People have this idea that it's special because, oh, well, they consider being trans as illegitimate. That's where it all comes from. Being trans is not real to them, and therefore, people are dressing up and basically just pretending to be something, that's what it all comes down to. It's not the case, obviously. There's plenty of scientific research to talk about, social research to talk about, and the lived experiences of trans people, it's not what we're here for. We don't, we don't have surgeries, we don't have, we don't take hormones, we don't change our names because it's just a fun little thing that we want to do, or we want to fuck with people around us. It's very serious and often-
Watch your language.
Sorry, apologize. I'm very passionate about this, obviously. It's very, it's, it's, it's very difficult, and oftentimes it creates problems for us, that's why we're here speaking. I don't think anybody would choose to be berated and treated as a second-class citizen. I, that's, I don't know if it just doesn't make sense to me. Yeah, I, I just, I hope that the board can also know that the community supports them if certain people in high positions threaten to pull money. The community is here to help you guys make up for that, so don't feel threatened by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Deborah Finkenbinger Pepper. I apologize, that is way off. I got the Deborah and Pepper part right.
So, it's Finkenbiner.
Finkenbiner, thank you, so.
So, I am here speaking again, I was at the last school board meeting, unfortunately, and once again, we had people coming in, bringing their faith beliefs into a public school. So, our country was founded on the separation of Christian state. We, we welcome all religion, and that diversity is the backbone of this great nation. And Canton has represented that, we have a wonderful diverse community that represents really what America can be. So, our schools need to embrace that. No one faith, no one person, not from a local citizen, not from a board member, and not from some national media influencer, can force their beliefs on everyone in this community. Everyone has the right to believe what they believe. So, for example, some believe, people believe abortion is horribly wrong, and that's their right to believe that. But I happen to believe that the only person that can make that decision, that's such a consequential decision in their life, is the person that's living that life. That's the only person that can make that decision. But, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what any one of us believe. What matters is that this school and this board have that tough job of accommodating all of our students with all of their beliefs across our diverse community. And as a public school, this board and policies must not be set on any singular set of faith beliefs. Thank you.
Next up is Rebecca Ferguson-Lutz.
Good evening, friends. My name is Reverend Rebecca Ferguson-Lutz, and I'm the pastor at Geneva Presbyterian Church here in Canton. As a resident of this school district who works with and ministers to the people of Plymouth and Canton, I listened with dismay, to say the least, at the public comments made at the last Board of Education meeting on May 27th. And I was tempted to draft a point-by-point response to those comments, but they were so filled with logical fallacies that I found it to be virtually impossible. What I will say, however, in summary, is that I was incredibly disheartened to hear the way that God's name was being invoked as a means of intimidation. That is not prophetic preaching, that is religiously sanctioned bullying. And I am sorry that you had to be subjected to that in fulfillment of your responsibilities to the people of this community. So on behalf of institutionalized Christianity, please accept my apologies for the way that our faith was weaponized against you. That was the real sin, that was the real sin on display. We are living in a moment of political history that fears diversity and equity and inclusion. The rhetoric of white, of toxic masculinity and white Christian nationalism actively disguises that existential fear, but it is fear. I don't believe that we have anything to fear. I think that we should be celebrating the incredible variation of humankind in race, ethnicity, culture, sexuality, gender, language, religion, and political thought. Actually, the only thing we have to fear is bigotry. You know that diversity is not a threat. You know that cultural pluralism and intellectual freedom are not perils. They are, in fact, the very linchpins of our society. Please feel absolutely empowered to use your best judgment to create safe environments of cultural pluralism and intellectual freedom. Please see their fear for what it is, but persist in your vision for an educational system that celebrates the unique gifts and identities of all students. Now, I apologize if my remarks, like the PCCS website apparently, recycles academic activism. So in closing, I will put my exhortation into plainer language. Folks need to think for themselves, stop listening to toxic theology and fear-mongering propagandistic talk radio, and they need to be kind to others. Thank you.
Next up is Brad Hears. Brad Hears.
I'm Brad Hears, I'm a 24-year resident of PCCS School District and have a father of three children who all graduated. My oldest is a teacher in the district. My two youngest are both graduates and both queer. My middle child came out as bisexual at 15, and later came out as transgender. And my youngest is bisexual. I may, myself, am a straight, upper-middle-class WASP white guy. I'm about as boring as they come. But I, and I suspect I look a lot like the people that were here yelling at you last month. I celebrate the diversity. I look at what I have in front of me as a board, as our superintendent. Diversity is strength in this community, it's a strength in this school district. I've got wonderful friends of all ethnicities, of all religions. I've had the privilege of celebrating Diwali with Hindu friends, of having Iftar with Muslim friends. I know that we don't understand the divine in the same way, but we can still love each other, we can still have kindness for each other, we can see each other's humanity. The same goes for all forms of diversity, whether that's ethnicity, whether that's religion, whether it's queer kids. This board did a wonderful thing five years ago when they went against what people saw as a tide and adopted the current policy, and you continue to do wonderful things to, to continue that policy despite the headwinds that are being faced. We, as a community, have been a beacon for other communities. Celine has recently adopted a policy much like ours, and people who were aware of that told me that, that we were brought up. I think there's a perception that Plymouth in particular, and maybe Canton less so, is maybe more intransigent in our views and less, less diverse than we actually are. And we've been a beacon for others to do that, and this is something we should be proud of, and I thank you. And on a personal note, both of my children, who are queer, have gone through mental health issues. And my youngest in particular had serious mental health issues. Nearly 40% of LGBT youth seriously consider suicide, almost one out of five, that's two out of five, almost one out of five attempt suicide. Nearly 50% of transgender and non-binary youth seriously consider suicide. These are terrifying numbers, and frankly, this is not about people just being scared of people. You are saving lives. My youngest child, I don't know if he would be here if not for feeling the caring and love of administrators, of counselors, of teachers. This is not about fear, this is about you adopted a policy that is saving lives and will continue to save lives, and I thank you for that.
Next up is Matt Caramango. Thank you for the phonetics.
Yeah, the G is before the N. That's the only, everybody messes that part up, though.
Oh, Magno.
Like, I just answer to it anyways, it's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm Matt Caramagno, I'm a father of three, two of them go to Tonda, and one of them is very vocally upset that you won't enroll three-year-olds in kindergarten. So, we're trying to get you that per pupil allowance as fast as we can. And my kids finished really great years. They felt very loved and supported by their teachers and the administration, and I'm here because all students deserve to feel that way every year in PCCS. Last, last meeting was a lot, I watched some of it on YouTube and I had to stop. It's usually a rule for me not to argue with people from out of town who come to bully us and our children, but then one of the speakers slandered a really excellent book before they fled into the night, and I didn't want to let that slide. This is the book they refer to as George, it is now called Melissa, and the author encourages people to fix it with a Sharpie, as my wife did for me, because my handwriting's not that nice. And it sat in my classroom library when I was a teacher for 15 years, mostly in fourth grade. And I know it might be shocking to everyone in this room, but I suspect that last week's speaker maybe didn't read the book. I suspect based on what they said about the content, because I have read it multiple times, and many of my students read it, none of whom were harmed by it. And it's a really sweet book about friendship and being yourself, and it's about a trans fourth grader who wants to participate in a school play and feel safe at home, and it's about the impact on a kid when the important people in their lives do and don't support them. And it's a perfectly appropriate book that more people should read. All of our students deserve a chance to see themselves in stories, and all of our students deserve the chance to read about people who are different from them. And all of our students deserve to be supported and loved for who they are. Thank you.
Next up is Heather Gatney.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Heather Gatney, and I live in the city of Plymouth with my two children, who both attend schools in the district. And I'm here with members of our local Indivisible group and PFLAG group to support the safety and the well-being of all students. I am deeply grateful for this public forum because it's a space where parents, students, and community members can speak directly to you about the issues that matter most in our schools. This is where we, as a community, celebrate successes, voice concerns, and work together to ensure every child receives the education that they deserve. That's why I was horrified when the May 27th school board meeting was hijacked by far-right social media influencers who don't live here, they don't work here, they don't pay taxes here, they don't have children in our schools. They didn't come to contribute, they came here to divide our community. They were paid agitators from out of state funded by national extremist groups to travel from town to town attacking public schools for profit and for clicks. Meanwhile, we're here as unpaid parents and neighbors who generally care about the children here. So those grifters use this platform to spread hateful messages, attack our vulnerable kids, and turn our local discussions into a political circus. It wasn't just disruptive, it was undemocratic. They don't speak for us. Outsiders shouldn't drown out the voices of those who actually live with the consequences of the decisions made in this room. That's why I'm speaking here tonight, to urge the school board to adopt a residents-first speaking policy. That way, you prioritize us, the parents who volunteer in the classrooms, the teachers who understand our students' needs, and the taxpayers who invest in our schools. Non-residents with no ties to our community should speak only after locals are heard first, and only if time allows. Or better yet, they can take their performative outrage elsewhere. Our schools belong to this community, let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Next up is Rachel Hayes.
Hello. My name is Rachel Hayes. I am a PFLAG board member, a member of Western Wayne Indivisible, and a citizen of Plymouth for 28 years. My husband and I raised our kids here because of our community's shared values, including the importance of respect and integrity, of unity and belonging. Our values run deep here in Plymouth Canton, and that is something to be grateful for and proud of. It's also something to protect. On May 27th, opportunists who do not share our values targeted our community. They disrespected you, the board, and vilified our children that you worked so hard to protect. Their theatrical display was meant to intimidate, to diminish, and to harm. It was performative bullying, and it was a disgrace. As the adults of our community, we set a standard of behavior for our children. Respectful disagreement is a part of a healthy society, the key word being respectful. Bullying has no place anywhere in Plymouth Canton, not on our streets, not in our schools, and not in our public forum. Here, we welcome respectful differing opinions from fellow citizens. We do not welcome those who feel that it is their right to come here from outside of our state and dictate to our community how to raise our children, how to educate our children, and how to treat our children. There is no room here in Plymouth Canton for outsiders seeking to divide us with their fear-mongering agenda, using our children to capitalize on and exploit our beliefs in protecting our schools and our kids from harm. We believe that every child in our schools has unlimited potential, unique to themselves, when raised and taught in an environment that tells them, "You are an accepted and valued member of our community because of what you alone bring to the table, and we want you to succeed." I'm sure we can all agree that they want, that we want this to be the message for our kids, and that every child deserves dignity, respect, and a safe, welcoming learning environment, every child. We appreciate the board's commitment to these beliefs. The rest of us, as adult citizens of our community, should be reminding ourselves that kids absorb messages all around them all the time, and these messages are forming their sense of self. And after reminding ourselves of this, we then, as the adults, need to ask ourselves, what messages are we sending? Are we protecting our children? Are we providing all of our children the sense of self-worth needed to succeed? We are all here tonight to send some messages of our own to the board. Thank you for your hard work and caring dedication to all of our district's kids. To all the kids at PCCS, we support you and we aren't going anywhere. And to those who came here on May 27th to sow division and to spread lies, misinformation, and bigotry, your cruel agenda is not welcome here.
Thank you. Next up? Next up is Lori Mares.
Dear School Board Members, Superintendent Merritt, and School Administrators, I'm Lori Mares, I live in the city of Plymouth, I'm president of PFLAG Plymouth Canton. First, thank you for listening to all of us. I appreciate your commitment to the students at PCCS. I was saddened by the misinformed comments made at the last board meeting by the five people who flew in from out of state to yell at you. And I am sad that some members of our community thought it was appropriate to bring them here. I'll let other members of our group address the falsehoods in their statements. I would like to just observe that we are a public school system and that people who wish their children to receive a religious education have many private school options. I myself went to a parochial school, but my... But my husband and I sent our kids to Plymouth Canton Community Schools because we wanted them to meet kids of different colors, religions, and backgrounds. Our kids had great experiences here, had excellent educations, and made lasting friendships. A couple of our PFLAG board members were invited recently to meet with the queer youth committee at Plymouth High School. I was so impressed by how vulnerable the kids were with us and how much they stuck up for each other. They were a small but fierce group who are determined to be authentic in their lives. They are courageous and deserve our admiration. I believe we all want kids to learn and thrive at school. We know kids do better when they feel a sense of belonging at school. We ask that you and our community members do everything you can to create an inclusive, affirming culture for all students, including queer kids, people of color, and those who were born elsewhere. Thank you again for your dedication.
Next up is Danielle Shepherd.
Hi. My name is Danielle Shepherd, and I live in Westland now after living in Canton for 10 years. But I have two kids who attend and attended Plymouth Canton schools. One of them just graduated this Sunday from Plymouth High School. She is a cisgender, straight female. And then I have a son who is transgender who attends one of the middle schools. My son has had the amazing experience, I'm sorry, of growing up in this accepting and inclusive district. While designated as female at birth, he's almost 13 years old now and identifies as male. By kindergarten, he was non-conforming. He wore both boys' and girls' clothes, played with the boys and the girls, and chose to be grouped sometimes with the boys and sometimes with the girls. He went by a gender-neutral nickname. This was not confusing to his classmates. They simply knew him as a girl who was also a boy. That's a quote from one of his friends. The district's policy to allow kids to wear whatever they want within the general dress code allowed my child to go to school feeling comfortable and able to focus on his classwork and not his gender expression. It meant he was the only girl at his kindergarten music concert wearing a suit. He wore a suit to his first-grade daddy-daughter dance as well, and absolutely rocked it. After years of hard, open, and honest discussions in our home, at the age of eight, my child came out as fully transgender. He confided in his teacher that he was solely male, not sometimes a boy and sometimes a girl, and told her what name he'd like to use. This caring and amazing teacher immediately suggested that he should discuss this with his parents, and they could do it together. And with his permission, she reached out to his dad and me the same day. We worked as a team with his teacher and the administrative staff to determine the best next steps. Because of the school district's inclusive policies, my son has the name and gender he identifies with on my star and in the classroom. This consistency between home and school has a positive impact on his health and well-being, as well as making him feel cared for. Even though the boys' bathroom is an option for him, my son chooses to use the gender-neutral bathroom in the school office. Please note, though, this bathroom is available to other students, those who may feel uncomfortable with sharing a bathroom with any other kids, including the LGBTQ community. My cisgender daughter has shared bathrooms with trans and non-binary students at school and said it was never a problem. She said, "We just go in and do our thing, it's no big deal." My son's life hasn't been without challenges. But thanks to the district's inclusive policies, and acceptance and understanding and support of the teachers and administrative staff, as well as acceptance by the students thanks to the example set by the teachers and staff, my son's gender and gender expression have not been a source of hardship at school. So I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for creating an accepting environment for students like my son.
Next up is Ann Van Wagner. Can you, because you're addressing the board, could you have it be faced this way?
Hello. My name is Ann Van Wagner. I'm a parent and a resident of Plymouth Township, and I'm married to a former Plymouth Canton teacher. He was an American history teacher for 38 years, and a basketball coach for 50 years. Last year was his final year. And he loved working for Plymouth Canton. Most of us know by now what DEI stands for, Diversity, Education, and Inclusion. I think it's wonderful that Plymouth Canton schools include such a diverse group of students and staff, just like our diverse interconnected world. After watching the last school board meeting on YouTube, I was compelled to come here today. After hearing such strong criticisms of DEI, I was determined to find out, well, what's the opposite of DEI? What does that represent? So that's what my poster is about. So I looked it up. I said, "What's the opposite of DEI?" I came up with my own acronym for it, MIE, which stands for monoculturism, inequality, and exclusion. So what's monoculturism? It's a big word. What does it mean? In the context of society, it refers to a dominant culture that suppresses other cultures and is characterized by a belief in the superiority of one group over all other groups and cultures. Dominant cultures believe everyone should adopt or conform to their practices and beliefs. Inequality, it's the opposite of equity. In the context of schools, inequality refers to the uneven distribution of resources and opportunities among students, leading to disparities in educational outcomes between different groups of students. I thought it was the goal of educational institutions to help all students succeed to the best of their abilities. Finally, exclusion. Exclusion disproportionately affects vulnerable students and is certainly a form of psychological bullying. Exclusion is linked to the following four things: lower academic performance, reduces the chances of a student graduating from high school, negatively impacts students' mental and emotional health, as we've heard from different parents today, and can lead to rejection or weaken relationships with other students. Now that I know what the opposite of DEI represents, my support for DEI is even greater than it was. And I wonder, what parent would want to send their child to school that doesn't support it? The spirit of DEI is fairness, and who doesn't want to be treated fairly? Now you know the opposite of DEI. What do you support?
Next up is Leo Saunders.
Hello. My name is Leo Saunders. First of all, I would like to thank those of you on the board who are dedicated to making sure that every child has a chance for a future. I have spent most of my life attending the Plymouth Canton Community School System. In the past few years, I have been more than grateful to know that those schools are behind me, that I will never have to walk those hallways again. Like so many of the LGBTQ+ youth in the district today, I was made a target before I even knew that I was different. Just like the other little boys, digging in the dirt and playing superheroes or soccer was my idea of fun. But just like the little girls, I wanted to dance around in twirly dresses and playhouse. By the time I had realized why it was so hard for me to fit in there, there was no amount of trying to be normal that would take that target off of my back. I reached out to every support the schools offered, but that only ever made it worse, resulting in multiple hospitalizations and irreversible harm done to me mentally. So many of my friends also grew up knowing that telling an adult in this district would only cause more problems rather than solve them. Even with the regular okay-to-say assemblies and the no-tolerance bullying policies, the staff would ignore any problems brought to them unless the ambulance or police needed to be called. I stand here impatiently waiting for a day that children in these schools stop being forced to live through so much harassment at a young age, a day where I can be proud to have learned in this district, rather than worried for anyone sending their kid to these schools. I am so grateful that I have heard all of these parents speak out about the help that their children have received, the support that they have received in your system, because that was never there when I was going through those hallways. I am 20 years old. I turn 21 in a couple of months. Graduation was not far away for me. This was in the very recent past. I am not hateful towards the bullies. I know that they were speaking as mockingbirds, mimicking the rhetoric of their guardians. I am not hateful to the guardians speaking in these ways. It is only human to fear what we don't understand. But if this is a fight of queer identities being in some way unnatural, I would like all of you to note that homosexual relations are seen in over 1,500 species, at least of 51 of which are primates. Be aware of the fact that many, if not most, of the people in my community were raised only seeing LGBTQ+ representation as the butt of a joke, if at all. Having access to knowledge about queer experiences and history is not the cause of your child being gay. It will not turn them into something they are not. However, trial and error, finding ourselves, is something we all must experience to grow. Denying a child to be themselves by giving others freedom to harass them is not going to do anything but make them hate the world. Protect queer youth, protect trans youth, and for the love of God, protect the children from hate. Thank you for your time.
Hello to the board, all the folks here. This is what democracy looks like? Love it. Love it. My name is Michelle Mustakis. I grew up in Harper Woods on the east side, was out of state for many, many years, came back 10 years ago, and I've lived in Canton ever since, and I love it here. I'm a member of Western Wayne Indivisible, a local chapter, local emphasis, dedicated to helping our community thrive. And at the heart of our community are our public schools, which is why our group regularly attends and presents at these meetings. We thank the board for working with us and for their often thankless task of trying to ensure that each of our students is able to achieve the goals and dreams that they've set for themselves, which is why I'm speaking tonight, because I want to push back against the ambush that you, our community, and our students were subjected to on May 27th by the outside group that was leveling attacks. They were attacks. They were vile, they were disrespectful, they were filled with disinformation and outright lies, as we've documented in what Sarah will be giving you later. It was a shocking, it was a shocking display, reminiscent of the chaos that regularly erupted at school other board meetings across the country when we were having the phony CRT issues. And after the initial disbelief that this was happening here, we got to thinking, why would an outside group with no knowledge of the specifics, demographics, and needs of our community fly here from all across the country to each present a three-minute diatribe of insults and sarcasm? And then they all left together to fly back to wherever they came from? And by the way, they missed the presentation on the budget, and they missed the presentation on the exciting new AI program, which are the things that really matter, you know? And then we saw their Facebook and their Instagram posts about the meeting, and we knew why they were here. They're social media influencers. They weren't here to help our community, they were here to use us, to use you, and worst of all, to use your kids for the purpose of growing their social media reach, kids for clicks. And what better way for them to grow their influence to hit on all the hot topic buttons, specifically the ones that target our most vulnerable students, and further marginalize them, hurting them while doing nothing to actually improve the education of our entire student body? You can be assured that we will not be bullied into letting hate, whether it's by outsiders or insiders, hijack our community and threaten our kids.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Krasinski. Krasinski, thank you.
Okay. So I am here tonight as a mother of two children in the Plymouth Canton Community School District, and as a citizen who is deeply concerned for the rights of our students. As has been previously mentioned, on Tuesday, May 27th, a group of outside agitators flown in from various parts of the United States mounted a coordinated attack on our school board. These agitators are well-known social activists with a large internet presence. I will not speak their name and grant them more publicity, nor will I repeat their words of hate and give them more airtime. To our board members, I have written a letter which contains information that was compiled on the dissenters who verbally assaulted you, our community, and this district's policies. I have catalogued their arguments, which were riddled with inaccuracies and intolerance, and I have responded to their attacks with calls for acceptance and your steadfast support. This letter was circulated to groups of concerned parents and citizens who were asked to sign the document in support. In a matter of only two days, we were able to collect 150 signatures. This letter and the associated signatures will be handed out to each of you tonight so that you can know that your community stands with you on the policies that you've set forth for our district. We also put out the call to the community, invited anyone who wanted to stand in solidarity with our message of acceptance and love to be here tonight. Look around the room. These are the faces of the people who believe in what you are doing. These are the individuals who believe that diversity, equity, inclusion, dignity, and respect are worth fighting for. The agitators who stood here two weeks ago do not know our community. They do not care about our students. They don't even know what our policies actually say. This was a group of social media influencers seeking to boost their own internet ratings, willing to exploit our kids for clicks, and happily spreading libel for likes. I would like to end tonight by calling on everyone to stop insisting the school board's policies have some inherent political stance. They do not. These are not leftist, these are not liberal, these are not progressive policies. No. These are, simply put, humane policies. You, as board members, should be proud that you seek to protect, empower, and uplift every student in your district. Thank you so much.
Could you give them to Diane, please? She'll make sure, right behind you. She'll make sure we get them. Thank you. Next up is Nancy Farber.
Was I close?
Farber.
Farber.
Last one?
No, we have a few more. Okay. All right. My name is Nancy Farber, and I've lived here my entire adult life. I chose Canton, and I'm proud to say that my kids were shaped by Plymouth Canton Community Schools K through 12. We've heard a lot of speakers tonight, and so I'm going to kind of skip over some of my words, because a lot of them have been said, and far better than I could have said it. What I do want to focus on, though, is offering, instead of the misinformation and the intimidation that we heard on May 27th, a little bit of truth here. The vast majority of people, they want well-funded public schools with experienced, qualified educators. We want our kids to learn to think for themselves. We want innovative curriculums with the latest tech, like AI. We want strong special education programs. We want fruits and veggies and kumquats in the cafeterias. We want books with transgender students in them. We want security professionals who are monitoring lightning strikes at the park. We want... We want nurses, counselors, and other support staff because we know it takes a lot to keep kids safe and healthy. And we want joy, to come back to our beginning of this meeting. We want field trips and fun fairs, robotics, culinary competitions, holidays around the world, kids lighting up when librarians greet them in the morning, principals rocking cool suits, food service staffers snapping selfies, and teachers who give high-fives. Oh, and not to mention graduating seniors. Tonight, you have heard many of us speak in response to these outside agitators of the last meeting, but what you didn't hear from us was hostility, or intimidation, or disrespect. We will not perpetuate a cycle of conflict. We celebrate, we advocate, and we look to the future, and we welcome all who wish to do the same. Thank you.
Next up is Steve Goulias. Again, correct me.
Goulias.
Goulias?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm here as a proud parent of a recently graduated Salem senior on Sunday, and as many of us in the district were. And I'm coming to give a little bit of feedback about the commencement ceremony. I came a few years ago when we had a foreign exchange student, and unfortunately, the ceremony lacked a bit more decorum this time, mainly due to the audience. There was very inappropriate cheering for individuals that persisted throughout the event, and even though Mrs. Villarosa asked for decorum at the meeting, or at the commencement, that unfortunately wasn't honored. And I would say approximately 25% of the names were trampled on by other parents cheering for their own children at the expense of others. I know there's limited things that can be done, just given the culture of the individuals who came, but I was disappointed by the administrators, a number of in this building and in view of the stage, that did not try to stop this, to the behavior from the audience. There was a request from Mrs. Villarosa at the beginning to ask the audience to not, to not, to hold their applause, and no one tried to stop that when, when the audience got out of control. And frankly, by the end of the commencement, it really resembled more of a WWE match than a commencement. So I would ask the board and those responsible for the commencement to carefully consider commencements going forward. If there perhaps could be either longer time given between names, I understand they would extend the ceremonies, maybe just entering from one side of the stage to allow a brief pause between, or if the district would like to play hardball, perhaps considering ejecting members from the audience, holding diplomas, things of this sort, to let people know that the respect for those who deserve their names to be held is honored. So thank you for approving that. We'll look forward to hopefully a better time. I'm happy to say at least our son's name was heard, but I know a number of others were disappointed, and hopefully, when our daughter comes in three years, it'll be an approved process. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to your son. Next up is Emily Keeler. Emily Keeler. I'm seeing no one coming up, so we'll skip that one. Next is Lauren Jewett.
Hello, my name is Lauren Yipe. You're all right. It's a hard one. A Polish J. I have been a Canton resident for almost 15 years, and I'm here today as a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. I grew up in the 90s and early aughts in a rural area in the thumb. For most of grade school, I didn't have the privilege to attend public school. I attended a private evangelical Christian school, and I want to share some of my experience there with you today. This community was extremely anti-LGBT and had strong ideas of what was feminine and what was masculine. And this created many issues for boys and girls, whether you were straight or not. We were forced into boxes of what our appearance could be and even what our interests could be. We were constantly policed. What was your hair like? What were you wearing? Did you play with dinosaurs or with dolls? Were you good at STEM or caregiving? And you were constantly judging yourself and if you met those standards. If you deviated too far from the community's defined gender roles, regardless of whether you were gay or not, you could expect bullying and punishment from peers, parents, and the school. Homosexuality was a corruption that had to be uprooted. Many children internalized this message, and they realized that their parents and community would rather have dead kids than gay kids. The first time that I made an attempt on my life, I was 12-years-old. And as you can see, fortunately, I was not very successful in any of those, but unfortunately, some of my peers were not so lucky. But many did make it, even in such a hostile environment, with strict control and censorship of the information that we were given and what we were told was acceptable to be, even trans kids. Some people believe that if they have enough control, they can just change all the things that they don't like or understand into something that they do. But that is just not true. We are born, not made. I believe in a community that values and protects children. I believe in a community that provides children with the ability to understand who they are and gives them the knowledge to know when they are being abused or taken advantage of, a community where children know that they are loved and that helps all children thrive. I hope very much that Canton feels the same. Thank you.
This is the last one. So the last Citizens' Comments card I have is Amanda Williams.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Amanda Williams. I am a staff member in the district. I also have two students in the district, one at Discovery and one at Plymouth High School. My family's also lived in Canton for more than 20 years. In light of what occurred at the last school board meeting, I'd like to respectfully request that the board consider adopting a policy requiring individuals who speak during public comment to disclose whether or not they reside within the district at the beginning of their comment time. I know they include their addresses on the comment form, but it would be beneficial for the people listening to know this information when hearing what they have to say. Additionally, I ask the board to consider prioritizing public comments so that residents and taxpayers of the district are given the opportunity to speak first, especially in the limited comment slots available at the beginning of meetings. Those from outside the district could still be heard during the second public comment period. This approach would help ensure that the voices of those most directly impacted by board decisions, our students, families, staff, and local taxpayers, are prioritized without infringing on anyone's rights. It would also be in alignment with the Michigan Open Meetings Act, which requires a reasonable opportunity for public comment, and with First Amendment protections, provided the policy is applied in a viewpoint-neutral and content-neutral manner, which you are already doing. As a teacher and parent, I appreciate the district's commitment to community input, including the surveys that are sent to families, students, and staff. The results of those surveys and those you've heard from tonight have clearly shown strong support for the current policies in place, and I believe it's important that the board's decisions continue to reflect the priorities of our local community. Thank you.
That is the end of Citizens' Comments for the meeting. We are now moving on to Letter H for discussion. They don't have any items for discussion. And then now we go on to follow-up board questions. Do we have any from last meeting?
We don't have from last meeting.
None? Okay. Do we have?
There's one for follow-up on the AI program as it comes in, but I don't think we need to continue talking about it. I just want to make sure that one was captured.
We did capture that.
Thank you.
Long-standing to monitor.
Do we have any open questions that need to be addressed from this meeting? I did not catch any, but, no? Okay. We've reached the end of our agenda, and we are going to adjourn at 9:40. Thank you all for being here.